I'm calling to order night nine of Arlington's annual town meeting. Okay, let's settle down. Alexei Detokville was a 19th century statesman and philosopher from France who observed and studied American democracy. He wrote, "The greatness of America lies not in being more enlightened than any other nation, but rather in her ability to repair her faults." So let's talk about last Wednesday. Okay, settle down. Let's settle down. I've gotten a lot of feedback about debate on Article 40. Some of it good, some of it bad, and some of it ugly. So let me cover the most pressing points ranging from the events of last Wednesday to plans going forward. In recent years, and remember, let's silence our phones, please. Thank you. In recent years, when I expect a very high demand for speakers on an article, I've taken a more structured approach to speaker selection to ensure some diversity of viewpoints, like balancing pro and con speakers. The reason I don't do this for other articles is that it makes managing debate a lot harder and less efficient, given limitations in how the electronic handsets are configured. You can request to speak, but you can't indicate how you're going to use your time. Also, it requires me to make real-time judgments about whether questions are really questions. I'll say more about that later. I've gotten also a lot of feedback and suggestions about managing the speaker queue in ways that folks believe would be more fair. Unfortunately, everyone seems to have a different idea of what that looks like. Also, I've gotten feedback that some of you had trouble following the debate because you were distracted by conversations that town meeting members around you were having throughout the entire debate. That is not acceptable. Whispering a comment to your neighbor is one thing, but having an ongoing conversation is another. When I gavel us into session, the conversations need to stop, or you need to take those conversations outside the chamber. A few folks reached out to me about their speaking requests disappearing from the queue. It's unclear if it's from accidental button pushes or some sort of software bug. I'm looking into that, and going forward, I'm making it a priority that we use a system that doesn't make it so easy to remove yourself accidentally from the queue. In response to a point of order, the only town meeting members who were recognized to speak during debate under Article 40 last Wednesday were in fact men. I checked, I watched the whole video. Some of whom spent a majority of their mostly question time expressing an opinion either implicitly or explicitly on both sides of the debate. And if you remember it happening only on one side, as was indicated by applause in response to another point of order about whether we had heard from anyone who'd spoken in opposition, I invite you to go back and watch the hour of video. Meanwhile, the women we reached in the queue took the rules seriously, and as a result, I skipped over them. It's clear in retrospect that the incentives created unintentionally by my rules and my failure to police those rules with enough vigilance invited imbalances in both debate and along gender lines. As I said, I reviewed the video of the debate and specifically how it got terminated. And I stand by my decision that the motion to terminate debate was in order. When I asked the town meeting member whether he had a question or a motion, his answer informed my decision on whether to recognize him to speak at the podium. Once he reached the podium, the only words he uttered were his name, his precinct, and the phrase, "I moved the previous question." He did everything right. My only hesitation in the face of yet another point of order was because I didn't have a photographic memory of the exact sequence of events, and we don't have video instant replay at town meeting. In any event, the right thing did happen. Now, I don't like calling people out individually. But Mr. Fisher, Ezra Fisher, what you did, making a mockery of my rules by asking questions that you obviously knew the answer to, and my failure to call it out clearly and firmly as it happened, we're all worse off for it. And this institution is worse off. That trust needs to be rebuilt, and I hope you'll take that responsibility as seriously as I do. If anyone else is considering playing games with the rules, let me be clear, that if necessary, I will use my discretion to deprioritize speakers who flagrantly harm the integrity of this institution, especially when it comes to fairness during debate. I decided on the debate rules with good intentions, but good intentions are not enough. I'll be working with the Town Meeting Procedures Committee to discuss solutions for fair and transparent management of debate. Possibilities include running through the speaker queue in order like we ordinarily do, which is fair if you have a very fast reaction time, or take speakers in random order as some of you suggested over email. I'll just say that randomizing the order can still lead to unfair outcomes, but I don't have time to get into the details right now. Or more complex solutions involving speaking requests that indicate your intention directly from the handset. There are systems that can do that. There are a lot of possibilities, and we'll be reviewing them. The committee's meetings are announced to the TMM email list and are conducted in hybrid format. We'll be convening in the coming weeks, and the meetings are open to the public. Lastly, in case you're wondering, none of the issues that I just mentioned are grounds for reconsideration of any of the votes taken under Article 40. I mention all this because it's important to maintain the integrity of this institution, and a fair debate process is integral to that. And we all need to take that responsibility seriously. Now, please rise for the National Anthem. [Music] [Applause] 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 [Music] Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Ms. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting set forth in the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Monday, June 2, 2025, at 8:00 p.m.
Okay, we have a second. Let's settle down. So we have motion that if we don't finish tonight, we'll adjourn until Monday, June 2, at 8:00 p.m. in a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no.
No!
It is a majority. Can we bring up the test question, please? Okay, test question. True or false, during your tenure as a town meeting member at Arlington Town Meeting, there have been at least three moderators? If we can make it simpler to count, let's assume this is just town-wide elected moderators, not assistant moderators, because that might be harder to count. Mr. Jameson, do you really have a...
[Inaudible]
Okay. I figured, yes. So town-wide elected moderators. [Inaudible] [Applause] [Music] [Applause] [Music] [Applause] [Music] We'll actually have three present tonight. Okay, let's show the votes. Okay, so most have not served with three moderators? Has anyone served with four? I know it's at least a few, right? Okay, let's settle down and practice silence. And as we're finishing these screens, are there any announcements or resolutions tonight? Yes. Yep. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hello, everyone. My name is Valerie Geary, town meeting member for Precinct 11. I have two kiddos in our wonderful public schools. My daughter is in the 7th grade at Odysseum, just came from the chorus concert. I think I maybe saw some of you running from there to here as well. My son is in the 2nd grade at Bishop. In addition to serving on Town Meeting, I'm also on the board for Arlington Children's Theater, and I am on the PTO for both Bishop and Gibbs and Odysseum. So if you have kids in any of those schools and you get our weekly newsletters and you're wondering if it's a real person who sends them out, it is. It is me. So I'm one of the people that shares all the information with you about what is going on in the schools. And tonight, I'm here to talk to you briefly about another community organization that I am involved with, along with my two colleagues here who will introduce themselves.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jane Byrne.
Address?
Oh, sorry. 7 Argyle Road.
Hi, I'm Jenny Cattraro, 15 Stowcraft Road. So we are here tonight to talk to you about an organization for which I'm the managing director. It's called Grassroots for GVP, which stands for Grassroots for Gun Violence Prevention. We are a statewide organization. We have about 600 members throughout the state, working on all aspects of gun violence prevention. We work in four main areas of work: legislation, elections, strategic partners, and public education. We mainly focus on things that are happening here in the state, but when necessary needed, we do national work as well, particularly during federal election cycles. So we are a nonpartisan group. We have gun owners in our membership. Our focus is on gun safety and existing safely with the firearms that are already in our communities, and making sure that we keep our kids safe and that guns don't get into the hands of people who shouldn't have them. So some of the examples of the work that we do, if you have kids in APS, you might have seen in the spring newsletter that went out from Dr. Homan, there was some information in there about secure storage, which is basically about if you have firearms in your home, how do you make sure they are stored correctly, which a shocking amount of people don't know how to correctly do that. And this is particularly important with summer coming up, and we have kids that are going to be home for a lot longer, maybe more time on their hands than usual, and kids get nosy, to be honest, and they go through their parents' things. And so if you saw that in the newsletter, the information there on secure storage, that was our organization that spearheaded that effort. We just had about 20 of us that walked in the Mother's Day Walk for Peace to benefit the Louis D. Brown Peace Institute, which is based in Dorchester. You might have seen, there's quite a bit of news coverage on that. We had a team that went down there. We mentored two Boston-based high school groups, Tech Boston and the Marguerite Immunis Academy, as they are preparing to travel to Aspen in June to present their award-winning projects on how to best combat the issue of gun violence in schools. We are at farmer's markets, we're at Town Day, including in Arlington. We lobby at the State House, we make phone calls, we send postcards. We do all kinds of work on this issue. So again, we are a statewide organization, and it just so happens that a good chunk of our members and our leadership are based here, in the Arlington, Cambridge, and Lexington area, including myself and my colleagues here. So we need help, is basically what my pitch is to you here. If you want to get involved in gun violence prevention, we would love to have you join us in this effort. I will be sharing our website and our contact information in the lobby Slack channel after we are done presenting to you. We have jobs for people who have five minutes to spare and people who have, you know, hours on their hands. There's work you can do at home. You don't have to be comfortable with legislation and the ins and outs of how to, you know, speak about these issues, which are loaded and complicated, let's be honest. You just have to have a desire to try to keep our community safe, so we would love to have you. I just want to end by saying in 2023, we hit a very bleak milestone here in the United States. That's when firearm injuries became the number-one cause of death for children in the United States from the ages of 1 to 19, surpassing motor vehicle accidents. And the rate of kids who have died from gun-related injuries has doubled in the last decade. I'm seeing some quizzical faces. I promise you, it is true, as unbelievable as it sounds, firearms are the number-one killer of our children in the United States.
Ms. Geary, let me just interrupt.
Political, yes. Sorry, it's not a political issue.
Scope our remarks to Arlington.
To join us.
Yeah.
Yes, we are in Arlington. Our leadership team is mostly focused in Arlington, so please come and find us and work with us. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other announcements or resolutions tonight? Yes, Mr. Feeney.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Jim Feeney, Town Manager. I just wanted to take a moment to let Town Meeting know that its action in approving the MBTA Communities Bylaw in the fall of 2023 enabled us to receive a $3.5 million grant from the state to support the acquisition of affordable housing. You were just notified at the end of last week, so thank you.
Ms. Deschler, did you have an announcement or resolution?
Christine Deschler, Chair of the Finance Committee. I just want to remind people that the Finance Committee will have an open forum next Wednesday at 7:00 at the Community Center to solicit feedback from you all on our report. If you would like to provide us information or suggestions, you're welcome. If you want to hear how we build the report, you're also welcome. So again, next Wednesday at 7:00 at the Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements or resolutions? Ms. Mahan? And Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. [Inaudible]
Is that mic off?
How about now?
Nope.
Best-laid plans. How's that? Oh, that's much better. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. De Corsi and I are rising when we were brand-new baby town meeting members. The person who trained and educated us was our former town meeting member, I mean, town moderator, the gentleman from Precinct 8, Mr. Warden, and also our colleagues, Mr. Heard, Mr. Helmuth, and Mr. Diggins. We took a vote earlier tonight to make a presentation on the somewhat historic but bittersweet occasion of Mr. Warden's announcement the other night that he will not be running for reelection. So whereas Arlington is fortunate that so many of its residents willingly volunteer their time, effort, and expertise to serve as elected appointed officials, one such individual, John Warden, personifies this level of commitment. Mr. Warden is unique, however, in both the length and quality of his public service to the town, and...
Whereas on March 7, 1970, John Warden was first won election to Town Meeting. He has served as a town meeting member continuously ever since, having been reelected over 20 times by residents of his precinct. Upon his reelection to Town Meeting in calendar year 2023, Mr. Warden became, to our knowledge, only the second town meeting member in the town's history to be elected to consecutive terms encompassing more than 55 years, and...
Okay, thank you. Whereas on March 4, 1989, John Warden won election as town moderator in a contested race that included four candidates. In seeking that position, Mr. Warden wrote, quote, "The best government is that which is closest to the people, which is exactly what is accomplished in the representative town meeting," and...
Whereas John Warden was reelected five times to the position of town moderator as proof of the respect he had earned as the presiding officer of the Arlington Town Meeting. In each instance, following his initial election, he ran unopposed, and...
Whereas throughout his tenure as town moderator, John Warden ran the meeting fairly and with proper regard for town meeting status as one of the treasured institutions of our democracy, and...
Whereas on April 22, 2019, in recognition of his status at that time as the longest-serving town meeting member, John Warden was appointed by unanimous vote of Town Meeting to the position of measure of Warden Bark. He has been reappointed at each annual town meeting since then, and...
Whereas in addition to the foregoing elected and appointed positions, John Warden has also served on numerous boards and committees, including the Board of Registries, the Bylaw Recertification Study Committee, and the Town Meeting Procedures Committee. He has also participated in hundreds of public meetings over the years as a private citizen.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that in light of the announcement John Warden made to his fellow town meeting members on May 12, 2025, that he would not seek reelection in 2026, the Arlington Select Board sincerely thanks Mr. Warden for his numerous contributions to the town of Arlington and for his many years of public service, and...
Be it further resolved that we, the Arlington Select Board, do hereby name this 28th day of May 2025 John L. Warden the Third Day throughout the town of Arlington, and ask all residents to pay heed thereto. And to all my colleagues on Town Meeting, please join me in a round of applause for Mr. Warden. [Applause]
[Applause] [Music] 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 Mr. Moderator, fellow Town Meeting members, thank you, Mr. Corsi, and Ms. Mahan, and all the members of the Select Board for their dishonor. And I hope you're going to give me a copy of that showing, show it to my wife. [Laughter] She's probably watching on TV. Okay, well, thank you very much. This is very moving, and I really appreciate the citation here and the kind words that were said, and the kind and prolonged applause that all you folks gave me. And it means a lot to me that my service has been appreciated. So thank you, and I hope I'll get to say a few more words during the course of this final session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Corsi and Mrs. Mahan, and congratulations to Mr. Warden. I also want to invite, use my discretion as moderator, to invite up my predecessor to give a few words as well.
Good evening, John Leoni. I'm a former town meeting member from 1984, 2024. During that time, I served under one moderator besides myself, Mr. Warden. John taught me about town meeting, taught us all about town meeting, how it functions, and the proper way to run a town meeting. I've served under his tutelage all those years, until he wanted to have an assistant town moderator, because he was supposed to go to a family trip, I believe, to Scotland, and he couldn't go because we had a special town meeting scheduled during the family trip. The next year, John got an assistant moderator, which I got elected to. For the next three years, I served under his tutelage to learn basically the ropes of being a moderator, and all the things that I would have done wrong if I was the moderator. And I was finally elected, he finally resigned, his 2006 is last year. I was elected in 2007. Because of family circumstances, I was unable to serve. John stepped in. That gave him the privilege of being one of the only moderator in the town to serve a number of years that's not a factor of three. So he would have served 19 years instead of 18, because he stepped in for one of my years. It also left me with the same privilege, except I'm one year shy. But either way, John taught me how to be a town meeting member, taught me how to be a good moderator, and I always knew when I was doing something wrong, because I would look out and I would see a slight head shake. [Laughter] And I wasn't even sure if he knew he was doing it. You've gotten the head shake too? [Laughter] I'm not even sure he knew he was doing it. Only in one time in my 14 years, he came up and said something like, "I wouldn't have done it that way." [Laughter] But I learned, and I really want to thank him, and I'm sure the body does too, and the town owes you a debt of thanks. Thank you very much.
Okay, I know we still, we have a lot of business before us tonight. I just want to share one more quote from Detokville. He wrote, "History is a gallery of pictures in which there are few originals and many copies. Mr. Warden, you are absolutely one of the originals. We have all been enriched and inspired by your service to this community, and we wish you all the best in your well-deserved retirement from Town Meeting." Thank you. Okay, do we have any other announcements or resolutions? That's a pretty tough one to follow. Okay, seeing none. Are there reports to be received tonight? Seeing none. We will now resume Article 64. Now, I believe I did call for the opening of the speaker queue on Article 64 while, just before we went to presentations. We don't appear to have that actually cleared at that time, so we're going to, we're going to start with a clean speaker queue now, and I apologize for that. There, I watched the video, there appears to be just a miscommunication when I called for that. I didn't wait for that queue to be cleared and shown on the display. So can we bring up the speaker queue now? And so get ready. Okay, so it's now clear, and you can now, okay, that, no more clearing. This is it. Okay. Okay, so, let's see. We got, just as a reminder, we got through the presentations from the initial presenters for the main motion and the Rutterman Amendment. So let's now go through and, let's see, is this the top of the list? Yes. We'll start with Michelle De Rocher, followed by Guillermo Hamlin.
Michelle De Rocher, Precinct 19. I'm a passionate supporter of public media and a free press, and in these challenging times, I'm doubling down on my contributions to the institutions that I value. I'm a member of two local NPR radio stations, PBS Television Station, Boston Globe, Weekly International News Magazine, even my former hometown newspaper in Maine. Supporting these organizations is deeply important to me, and the reason I mention it here is because I feel very fortunate that I can afford to make and even recently increase the contributions I make to these organizations. That said, I don't feel comfortable forcing those choices on my neighbors and telling them that I choose to give $100,000 or even $200,000 of their tax dollars to a charity of my choice. And that is what we would be doing with this article. Arlingtonians can already choose to donate to ACMI if they would like to, and we should not make that choice for them, especially at a time when we are staring down another multimillion-dollar override later this year. Last week, we approved Article 45, which passed through the peg revenue that comes from cable television subscriptions. We learned in our debate that night that a lot of Massachusetts towns skimmed some of this money to keep for their town, which Arlington does not do. Arlington has always provided 100% of that money to ACMI, which this year amounted to close to $700,000. We also heard last week that revenue stream is declining because people aren't subscribing to cable TV like they used to. In fact, this has been a declining revenue stream for a decade or more, so this is not a surprise. a surprise. This matter should not be before us. The ACMI board should have long ago developed a strategy to address their declining revenue, and I'm alarmed that this is being touted as a one-time bridge while they figure something out for the future, but they have not indicated in any manner in their presentation how this year will be different. I think giving them this money now will only delay the necessary planning that seems not to have happened up to now. We are lucky that in Arlington, we have so many amazing nonprofits that do great work, and these organizations are not asking us for taxpayer money. They are seeking donations from their supporters, they're getting grants, they're developing partnerships, they are living within their means, and they are providing excellent services that they can afford to provide. Let's not burden the taxpayers of Arlington by this sizable new expense when citizens have been regularly digging deep to fund overrides to cover core town services. We have a structural deficit and we cannot put our heads in the sand and give new money to a local nonprofit, no matter how good the work they do. And ACMI does do good work. Those of you who want to support them can do so, and I encourage you to. But let's not make that choice for the taxpayers of Arlington. They can choose what charities they would like to support with their hard-earned money. We often talk about wanting to have an economically diverse town and welcome all people. How we vote on this article and for this appropriation request will show whether we mean that. Please vote no on the amendment and also vote no on the article. Thank you.
Guillermo Hamlin, followed by Mark Rosenthal.
Guillermo Hamlin, Precinct 14. It is quite obvious that I stood here and defended PEG access, public education governmental access before. It is clearly the case that I support the amendment. Let me approach this a different manner. To not support ACMI at this time would be to retreat from investments already made for these cable operators using your public infrastructure, your public utilities. There is different revenue models. In the State House right now, there is a way to basically treat the new cable streaming services like the old cable companies because these same streaming services are utilizing the same public rights of way that you invested in. So let's not punish ACMI for our lack of regulatory scope. I advocate that we actually move forward in supporting them with this amendment. We then return here to discuss a way to support our state legislatures in trying to make Netflix, Apple TV, these exponential frustrating streaming services that are effectively just the new cable anyway. And come back to find a way to make ACMI enter this new period of streaming services. Otherwise, you're watching it on YouTube and Google gets that money when we should find a way to return that to ACMI. These stations across Massachusetts, all across the Northeast and across the United States, they're dwindling and as a result, we are struggling to be able to advocate for voices that are often unheard. We run the opportunity of just consolidating the voices that we often hear. It is necessary. I understand that all these arguments made are valid, but I would not advise retreating now because cable operators are basically taking advantage of the fact that your tax dollars went to allowing them to use this when it is a privilege and not a right. And they are profiting off of each and every one of your efforts. And I would advise that for this one-time investment, we work with ACMI. Vote for the amendment, proceed with the main motion as amended, and then let's return here, discuss ways where we can actually do away with the old model, go for a new model, and to fund ACMI for decades to come. Thank you.
Mark Rosenthal, followed by Al Tasty.
Mark Rosenthal, Precinct 14. Arlington community media is an invaluable resource. It truly is community media for the town. At ACMI, Arlington students and residents learn how to create videos, how to record events, and ACMI's staff records town government meetings. They cover school sports and performances as well as town events. Arlington would not be the same without ACMI. And there is one especially important reason why town meeting, this very body, should support ACMI. Two years ago, we were presented with an article that would have eliminated the section of the bylaws that require that a transcript be kept to the proceedings of town meeting. Many members of town meeting spoke against that article. They emphasized how important it is to them to have a record of what was said about each article we consider. We voted not to eliminate the requirement to keep a record, and I think that was a very wise decision. Instead, we simply removed the requirement for the meeting to be transcribed by a stenographer. But if the meeting will no longer be required by a stenographer, how will it be required? Throughout that entire discussion, all of us just assumed that our meetings would be recorded by ACMI. Nobody ever considered what would happen if ACMI wasn't around to record our meetings. The town as a whole, and we in particular, as town meeting members, benefits immensely from having a financially healthy ACMI, and they deserve our help as they make the transition away from cable as their primary revenue source. As for the Rutterman Amendment, the increase it asks for amounts to a fart in a windstorm. It's less than 1/20th of 1% of the town's budget, but it will make an immense difference in the town's residents, I'm sorry, to the town's residents. Mr. Moderator, I have some questions I'd like to ask of Mr. McLeod and Mr. Leoni.
Why don't you get started with your questions?
Okay. The first one is, other towns in Massachusetts have community media stations. They must be facing shrinking revenue from cord cutting. Do you know how they're making up for the loss of funds?
Do any of the presenters have an answer to that question?
Go ahead.
And the name and title?
Norm McLeod, Executive Director for ACMI. Yes, there are many stations across the state of Massachusetts and in the country are having funding issues, who are all trying to figure out the best way to obtain funding. Locally, there are three stations in particular that I've been in strong contact with. One of them was Newton. The city of Newton has given that station $250,000 each year for three years. Lex Media, Lexington, has given them $150,000 each year for three years. Westboro, $150,000 for one year, but they're planning and putting it into their operating budget. Smaller stations in the area, Hopkinton, for example, they are, their town approved $50,000 and I think it was Lynn, they're getting from the town $75,000. That station, and there's two other stations I know of that may go actually go out of business at the end of June because their town folk were just not fast enough to get their act together, so to speak, to give the local station funding, direct funding.
Thank you. The next question I have is, if ACMI doesn't get the requested funding, will you be able to continue providing services like making recordings of town meeting and other government bodies like the ARB or, you know, whatever committees you're currently recording?
Yes, yes, we can. The question is, this whole question is really a staffing issue. There are seven people on ACMI staff, including me. I'm number seven. We have two people in ACMI who covers everything you see on ACMI, only two production people. That's because of a retirement and two resignations. Now, all of the events that you see are now being produced by two people. They cannot do that. It's burnt-out city, let's put it that way. We need the additional money so these folks can at least go home to their wives, their partners, without being burned out. So yes, the answer is yes, we can do it, but it's a great stress to do it.
Thank you again, and my final question is, if you don't get the requested funding, what, if any, services will ACMI no longer be able to provide?
We have about one minute left.
Well, that has to be seen. As our budget decreases, as you saw from the slides that were circulated, the revenue stream that we're getting is on a decreasing sin curve. Right now, only 36% of the towns and 36% of the households in Arlington get cable TV. So we're only getting income from 36% of our fellow residents. So those 36 are basically subsidizing everyone else. They're paying for all of this. Without a grant from the town, not this year, and we didn't ask for a one-time grant, let's be frank about it, we're going to probably be back next year unless there's changing at the legislature to change the funding model. We're not sure who and how many of our staffers we're going to be able to keep to maintain. And yes, we've decreased our staff through attrition over the last two years. We've lost two and a half people, and we're not going to be able to replace any of them. We're not going to be able to replace grant writers. Okay. So yes and no. We are going to lose ability to continue what we do.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Thank you. We're out of time.
Please vote for the amendment.
Wait, hold on. We're out of time now. We're out of time. Al Tasty, followed by Len Diggins.
Hi, Al Tasty, Precinct 17 and a member of the Finance Committee. One thing I want to sort of emphasize, the problem of cutting the cable is not, did not happen this year. It's been going on for several years, five years, 10 years, I'm not sure, but it's been going on for a long time. And to our knowledge, ACMI has not taken advantage, but not looked to create a new business model. Before I say a few more words, I'd like to ask the town manager, what steps have been taken to help out with the financial position of ACMI to date?
Mr. Feeny, do you have an answer to Mr. Tasty's question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jim Feeny, Town Manager. One thing I will note, when the Select Board and I received a presentation from ACMI earlier this year in seeking a request for funding, while I didn't think it would be possible to provide for an expenditure under the town's operating budget, I did think that we would be able to assist with reducing their expenditures by reducing the rent that they pay the town for their occupancy of 85 Park Ave to some nominal amount of approximately $1. And I believe that the board is supportive of that, and we're going to undergo a public purpose procurement before the start of the fiscal year to see if we can make that a reality. They currently pay just over $45,000 a year in rent.
So the town is making a sacrifice already of $45,000. That was done ahead of time. As somebody had said before, we have the ability under the law to take a share of the total revenues for our sort of administrative expenses. We don't do that. I don't think we ever have. So that's another contribution the town is making to ACMI. Ladies and gentlemen, next year, we're facing an override that, in my opinion, is going to be someplace in the middle range of $15 to $20 million unless some drastic steps are taken to reduce growth. I mean, sort of put that through your head, $15 or $20 million. We've never gone above $7, maybe $9 million in the past. That's going to be a huge burden. Now is not the time to voluntarily undertake more fiscal responsibility. You heard that this is not, they don't consider this a one-shot deal. They're going to be back year after year looking for hundreds of thousands of dollars to support it. The Finance Committee had a long, a lot of discussion about this. We basically believe that the ACMI business model is obsolete. They've got to do something politically through the legislature to change the law or a business model to diversify their revenue. They have not done that. We simply can't afford this. The town cannot support long-term this kind of a burden. We could hardly afford what we do now. The $100,000 recommendation, most of the Finance Committee, I think, might have voted against this at all, like zero, but the recommendation was made for a one-year $100,000 to help them get over the hump, to develop a new business model, to go after other sources of revenue, to coordinate with all the other cable TV companies across this state to get something through the legislature. This has been said, this is not an Arlington issue, it's a broad-based town issue. What the Finance Committee is recommending, I think, is very reasonable to give them, try to jumpstart, but $200,000 is not reasonable. Please support the recommendation of the Finance Committee and vote no on the substitute remission. Thank you.
Len Diggins, followed by Pi Fisher.
Leonard Diggins, Vice Chair, Select Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Just have some questions, and I'll route them through you, Mr. Moderator. You can screen them for scope and then direct them to whomever should get them. So my first question is, is there a ton-wide benefit from the services ACMI provides other than the recordings of meetings, these meetings and select board meetings, ARB meetings? I'm thinking like presentations by the town manager or...
Can you speak more to the microphone?
I'm sorry. I'm thinking like presentations by the town manager or the Director of Planning and Community Development. I'm wondering if there are other benefits, I mean, in addition to those that we may not be aware of?
Benefit, I didn't quite follow, benefits in terms of what?
Oh, the services that ACMI provides.
The benefits that the town gets from...
Yeah, to the town in general, that, from the services that ACMI provides. Because right now, we've noted that ACMI records meetings like these, meaning the select board meetings, ARB meetings. I'm wondering if there are other services that provide, that the whole town benefits from?
Right. Mr. Rutterman, you serve on the Board of ACMI, correct? Do you have answers? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Michael Rutterman, Precinct 9 and a member of ACMI's Board. As I understand, our contract as the holder of the franchise from the town of Arlington to provide its citizens with cable access services, the defined obligations are rather short. Cover town meeting, cover the school committee. Gentlemen, is there anything else that's spelled out? I don't believe so. Select board meetings, yes.
Mr. Leoni?
John Leoni, President of ACMI, yes, school committee, select board, town meeting.
That's a rather short list over the, and that's what the cable franchise fee originally was devoted to providing coverage of. Everything else that goes out on the ACMI airwaves is because of the abilities our staff, their professional expertise, and the numbers of the people, just the available hands, the educational programming, the public interest programming, two-thirds of the channels and way more than two-thirds of the hours on the air are additional, and they're made possible by what had been our previous level of funding before a number of folks, other employment, and we could not replace them. Yes.
Thank you. So...
Mr. Diggins, does that answer your question?
Election coverage.
Okay.
I want to respect...
Town meeting coverage.
I respect Mr. Diggins' time, Mr. Diggins.
Thank you. So, do we have a sense of what's going to happen with revenues? I know the graph, I mean, shows that it's declining, but is there any sense from the industry that there might be a plateau because your revenues come from... Because your revenues come from the percentage of monies that are spent, and even though subscribers may be decreasing, I imagine, at some rate, the amount that we are paying for cable will go up. So, do we have a sense of whether it's gonna plateau or not?
Mr. Leoni?
No, my only sense is that there is a certain subset of the population that will never get rid of television. Basically, people my age and older, older folks, we want TV. So, we're gonna pay our cable bill, and we're gonna pay our 5% of our cable bill towards local community pay. But as to the percentages, we, like I said before, are already at 36, and it's decreasing rapidly.
All right. Thanks. So, have you explored any changes to the model, the business model?
We have, the board has been looking at this for a few years. In that time, we have been in contact with our legislators, and there was a bill in front of the legislator last year that never made it out of committee, and we're hoping to, again, this year. But in the meantime, we have started fundraising with Patreon. Anyone can sign up, pay $7 a month, which is what you used to pay towards ACMI. Under the $200 we're asking for, it works out to $1 or so a year each. So, we're not asking for a lot, but we have started grant, you know, we're going to local businesses to ask them to sponsor us so they can get in front of the cameras. But we, let's face it, we're in a small town with not a lot of big businesses that can pay hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Great. So, I, someone posted the budget, and Mr. Feeney had referred to the 45K that the Select Board had authorized him to reduce to $1. But I saw the 45Ks still in the budget. Is that because it just hasn't been approved yet?
Correct. That's, we, the FinCom asked us to produce a, two budgets, one with the $200 and one with the $100. So, we did both, but as that is still a current expense that we're obligated to pay, it still showed up in that budget.
Gotcha. Okay. And, one last question. So, if you got, so, my understanding is that with the $100K, it will make the, make it easier on the employees that are there. Trust me, I get it. I mean, I think, I think, I looked at the salaries, and I'm surprised at how low they are, especially for one person in particular, who is just really key to the organization. But what would you do if you got the extra $100K?
Mr. Leoni?
We would be able to hire additional employees. One of them would be a development person, which would help us in getting additional funding, community outreach, and grant writing, hopefully. I am not a grant writer. I don't know how to write grants. I don't even know where the grant writing goes, but it is those kind of things. Plus, we could rehire some of those two and a half staff members we've lost through attrition so that other members don't burn out. We're literally burning out our staff members right now, under the weight of the work we're asking them to do.
Okay. Well, then, that precipitates another question. So, then, so that would put you in a more precarious position next year, then? Because you'd probably need $200K next year as opposed to $100K.
Let's keep the questions coming through me, please. Yep. Mr. Leoni?
Yes. We would, in my opinion, we would probably come back and ask again, unless there is a change at the legislative or the federal government level, which I doubt that will happen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Pi Fisher, followed by Alex Bagnall.
Point of order?
We have a point of order? Yeah. To the microphone, please.
Joe Babeyoros, Precinct 15. I'm sorry to say, I'm very confused. Are we, I don't understand how much is, what the $100,000 appropriation is. Does that include the $45,000 that you're forgiving in leases? So, it's really $145,000? And the additional...
Well, Ms. Babeyoros, I'll manage to cut you off, because that's not a point of order about the procedure or the order of the meeting.
My apologies.
That's a question that folks can certainly bring up during debate, if they wish to.
My apologies.
Pi Fisher?
Pi Fisher, Precinct 6. Mr. Moderator, if we pass Article 64 with the Ruderman Amendment, will Finance Committee motion to reconsider our budget as we'd have a deficit?
I can't predict the future. I'm aware of various options, and so the question is, if the, if the main motion passes, as amended by the Ruderman Amendment, if that also passes, Ms. Deschler, did you want to address this? And it's speculation at this point, unless you have a particular course of action that you intend to take.
Christine Deschler, Chair of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has recommended an appropriation of $100,000. If you approve any amount more than $100,000, we're gonna have to find that money somewhere, which means, frankly, all budgets will have to be on the table, and the Finance Committee will come back to you with a recommendation as to how to find that extra $100,000, or whatever amount Town Meeting votes.
And perhaps this is a question for Mr. Cunningham, that I believe the town is legally required to balance the budget? Is that accurate? Mr. Fisher, I mean, if you're not interested...
In fact, that was the third question I had written down.
Okay. I think it's useful for the meeting to know, yeah.
Can I ask my version of the question?
Yeah, yeah, please, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, if we end tonight with an imbalanced budget, are we legally allowed to end Town Meeting, or would we be required to continue meeting? And does it depend on whether we have a surplus or a deficit?
Right. I believe I know the answer, but I'll defer to Mr. Cunningham to give a legally accurate one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Cunningham, Town Council. Although there is some disagreement about this, I think that, according to the guidance provided by Division of Local Services, the answer is no. Town meeting could dissolve. The only thing that it cannot do is, it has to balance the budget before setting the tax rate, which usually occurs in the fall of any, of any particular calendar year. So, technically, it could be done. I think the custom practice, as I understand in the town of Arlington, I've been here about five years, but certainly dating much further back than that, is that Town Meeting does not engage in that practice. It considers good economic practice to balance its budget at Town Meeting.
Thank you. And, Mr. Moderator, roughly, how much does the town pay for each night of Town Meeting across things such as town staff that are paid to be here, and things like the voting technology we use with the clickers?
In its entirety. Mr. Feeney, do you have an answer to that question? And you'll have to kind of bring this back to the scope of the ACMI appropriation, which I assume you'll be able to do? Or should I assume that you'll be able to do it?
This might be out of scope. If I were to try and bring it back to the scope of the ACMI budget, it would be based on whether it is likely that we will have to reconsider other articles and continue meeting after tonight.
I guess I'm unclear on the connection. Is it the ratio of the amount spent on ACMI for the meeting versus all staff?
Sure.
Okay. I'll allow that.
How much of, there is an amendment to fund an extra $100,000 to ACMI. How much does the, roughly, how much does the town pay to ACMI for the technology for Town Meeting per night?
Okay. That's squarely within scope. Mr. Feeney, do you have an answer to that question? Now that we have a question in scope, I think we have a question that can't be answered, but go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We do not pay a fee per night to ACMI for Town Meeting. Thank you.
All set. Let's show the speaker queue again. Alex Bagnall next, followed by Paul Schlickman.
Alex Bagnall, Precinct 9. I move the question.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate and a second. All those in favor of terminating debate on all matters under Article 64 say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no.
No!
Debate is terminated. So, let's, not seeing folks standing, so let's proceed now with a vote on the Ruderman Amendment. And so, this amendment would replace the $100,000 appropriated in the main motion with $200,000 instead. So, if you're in favor of essentially doubling the appropriation from $100,000 to $200,000 for ACMI, you would vote yes. If you want to leave the main motion at $100,000 appropriation, then you'd vote 2 for no, and there'll be a follow-up vote on the main motion. So, let's open voting now on the Ruderman Amendment. So, once again, voting is now open. If you're in favor of doubling the appropriation to $200,000 in the main motion, then press 1 for yes. 2, if you want to leave the main motion as is, which will be voted separately afterwards. Get your votes in, just a few seconds left. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion fails. 37 in the affirmative, 170 negative 2 abstentions. So, let's now take a vote on the main motion, which is an appropriation of $100,000 to ACMI, to be expended solely for the purpose of providing educational governmental services to the town of Arlington. This is a majority vote. So, let's now open voting on the main motion for an appropriation for $100,000 to ACMI. If you're in favor of this appropriation, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. This is a majority vote. Get your votes in, just a few seconds left. Okay, let's close voting. And the main motion passes. 191 in the affirmative, 19 in the negative, 1 abstention. It is a majority vote. That takes us now to Article 69. Ms. Deschler, do you want to lead us off?
Christine Deschler, Chair of the Finance Committee. Now before you is Article 69, which seeks to transfer funds from our Perpetual Care Trust Fund for use by the Cemetery Commissioners and by, as part of our capital plan. The article asks for approval of appropriation of $240,000 to be given to the Cemetery Commissioners for the care of the cemeteries in town, and $90,000 for fence repairs at the cemetery on Medford Street. The Finance Committee recommends a positive vote on Article 69.
Thank you. Let's switch over to show the speaker queue. And this is the old one. As soon as this list is cleared, you may request to speak under Article 69. And this was on the consent agenda, and it was held by Christopher Moore. Mr. Moore, did you want to speak to this, to lead us off?
Christopher Moore, Precinct 14. Just briefly, I held the article because there was an error in the original report. It's been repaired in the supplemental report of the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Okay, so it's already been corrected. Correct, okay. Seeing no further speakers, let's proceed to a vote on the main motion under Article 69. This is a majority vote, and before we open voting, let me just summarize. This is to transfer $240,000 to the Cemetery Commissioners for the care of Town Cemeteries, and $90,000 to the capital budget for Medford Street fence repairs to be taken from the Perpetual Care Fund. That is the corrected vote, right, Mr. Moore? Yes. Yep. And it's a majority vote. So, let's open voting now for the main motion under Article 69. Voting is now open. If you're in favor of this appropriation, or this transfer, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. Do we have a timer, or? I guess we'll just leave it open until that numerator starts to settle down. Get your votes in, please. Okay, just five more seconds, and then we'll close voting. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion passes. 200 in the affirmative, 4 in the negative, 1 abstention. That now takes us to Article 73. Ms. Deschler?
Christine Deschler, Chair of the Finance Committee. Ladies and gentlemen, with this vote, we will have a balanced budget. Each year since the override, we've had to pull some money out of the stabilization fund to pay for essentially deficits, and we continue with this year, and you're being asked to appropriate a total of $8,984,045 of the Fiscal Stability Fund. That will leave approximately $5.5 million left in the Stability Fund, which will have to be used in its entirety next year, most likely. So, the Finance Committee recommends a positive vote on Article 73, which is a two-thirds vote.
Oh, is, I had it in my notes as majority. Did this change at some point?
I think it's taken my eyes a little bit.
Okay. So, I will update it in my notes. Thank you. And you are referring to Article 73, correct? Yep. Okay. Okay, this is it. Is that? Yes. Can we make sure that the slide reflects a two-thirds threshold, please? And, Mr. Cunningham, that's okay with you? Good. Okay. So, let's show the speaker queue right now, and let's, let's, I don't know when folks were ringing in those, I apologize. Okay. Speaker queue is now open. Just need to clear it once. Okay. So, we'll start with...
[laughter]
Okay. Maybe they cleared themselves. Okay. Okay. Seeing no speakers under Article 73, let's proceed to a vote on the main motion. As Ms. Deschler pointed out, this is a two-thirds vote to appropriate $8,984,045 from the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund. Is that correct, Ms. Deschler?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so let's now open voting for a two-thirds vote under Article 73. Ms. Leahy, and whoever else that was who entered the speaker queue, make sure you get your votes in. Remember, you can always vote multiple times while voting is open, and only your last vote will be registered until voting closes. Okay, just a few seconds left. Get your votes in, please. Let's close voting. And the motion passes. 202 in the affirmative, 3 in the negative. It is a two-thirds vote. That takes us now to Article 75. So, I believe now, let's see. This was no action. But appears it was not part of the consent agenda, which I'm, let's see. Let me just pull this up, one second. Okay, so I don't recall why this wasn't part of the consent agenda. I don't have any subsequent motions that have been filed for this, so it's currently sitting at no action. This is from the Select Board. Mrs. Mahan, did you want to speak to this at all?
No.
No? Okay. So, we can open the speaker queue. There's not a whole lot you can do at this point, but there are some procedural options if you were interested. The rest of the meeting might not be, but let's clear speakers. Let's clear the speaker queue. And, Mr. Jameson, do you have a motion? There's no scope for debate when there's no action, so if you have a motion that you would like to present?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jameson, Precinct 12. I just hope the contributory retirement body will see fit to present us with the report and support their request on the floor. Thank you.
I didn't follow...
I thought it would be useful if the contributory retirement board presented a report to Town Meeting each year, next year, when this comes up again, most likely, and they're not here to defend this. So, I'm voting no. Thank you.
What, is that...
I'm voting no.
Okay. Well, that really wasn't a point of order, and that consumed more of the meeting's time than I believe it needed to. So, we will proceed now to a vote on the main motion of no action. We'll take this by voice vote. All those in favor of no action under Article 75 say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no. And it is unanimous. We will take no action under Article 75. Okay, that takes us now to the resolution portion of the evening. So, I'd like to invite up Anna Litten, the Director of Libraries, to present the resolution for Article 76. And before she gets started, the, there is no, this has been kind of our custom for several years, there's no speaker queue under resolution articles. We'll have a pro and con speaker, at least in cases where, or at least a pro speaker. In many of these cases, no one indicated any support for speaking in opposition, and so, for many of these, we just have presenters on the pro side of the resolution. So, Ms. L... So Ms. Litten, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Anna Litten, Director of Libraries. I come before you today on behalf of the Board of Library Trustees and thousands of library users to ask for your support for Article 76, a resolution in support of development at the Fox Branch Library. A yes vote on today's resolution is a strong voice of support and another step on our road to a newly built Fox Branch Library. Next slide, please. In 2023, the town submitted a letter of intent to apply for Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program funds to rebuild the Fox Branch Library. These funds, along with town appropriated funding and privately raised monies, can be a major funding source for capital projects, providing up to 60% of costs for library construction projects in Massachusetts. As required under the grant process, I came before this body in May 2024, asking for your support for Article 55, an article of appropriation for planning and design. Town Meeting voted overwhelmingly in support of Article 55, with 97% of Town Meeting members voting to support the appropriation. The grant was submitted after months of community engagement and work by volunteers and staff. We are grateful to every Arlingtonian who attended a meeting, filled out a survey, and voiced support for the project, as well as every Town Meeting member who voted yes on Article 55 in 2024. While we were unsuccessful in securing grant funds in the 2023-2024 Grant Round, we remain committed to creating a newly built Fox Branch Library. Next slide, please. While we did not reach the hoped-for outcome, we received positive feedback on our application. Applications were evaluated on five criteria. Our project received very high scores for our building program and statement of need. We have room to grow in our finance and site option categories, and are already investigating options to improve our score in those areas. Our low community wealth factor was one of the factors that placed other communities ahead of Arlington in this competitive grant round. We were encouraged to apply in the next grant round and are already working to prepare our grant package, including our efforts here tonight. Next slide, please. Facility needs remain at the Fox. There is a path forward for this project, and our strong score in our building program and statement of need demonstrates that the vision and need for library services in Arlington are clear to state funders. We are looking forward to using the time before the next grant round opens to position the Fox for success. We are grateful to the work of the volunteer Arlington Libraries Foundation Board, who are already working to launch a capital campaign in support of this project. This private funding, along with town funds, will be crucial for this project. A yes vote on Article 76 would be one of the first pieces we hope to add to our grant application for the next MPLPC Grant Round. A yes vote on today's resolution is a signal to state funders that the town of Arlington values library services and spaces, and our intention is to rebuild the Fox Branch Library. I ask that you join the library trustees, friends, foundation, and library patrons in supporting this resolution and a new future for the Fox. Thank you for your attention, for your time on behalf of the community of Arlington, and as always, we thank the residents of Arlington for making the Robbins Library one of the highest circulating libraries in Massachusetts. We are on course to exceed 1 million checkouts this year, and it is truly an achievement thanks to the reading prowess of everyone in this room. Thank you.
Let's hold our applause. Let's hold applause, please. Thank you. As I said, so we don't have an opposition speaker who requested that in advance when I'd asked, I believe, multiple times through the TMM email list, and so there are no opposition speakers under Article 76. And as always, under resolutions, we don't have a speaker queue, so we'll proceed directly to a vote on the main motion, which is the resolution from the Board of Library Trustees. You can find it in the annotated warrant. It's also in the Board of Library Trustees report. Things are operating a little bit differently for resolutions this year than they have in past years. I don't know if this trend will continue. That's up to the Select Board, but the Select Board did not report on these resolutions. They did not take a recommended vote. And so the Board of Library Trustees has standing as a committee to offer the main motion, and they have done so, and that's the main motion before us. So we'll now proceed to a vote on the main motion. It's a majority vote. So if you're in favor of the resolution under the main motion, you'd press one for yes. If you're opposed to that, you press two for no. So it looks like voting is already open. So if you're in favor of the resolution, press one for yes. And this is expressing the will or the opinion of Town Meeting in a non-binding way. It's a non-binding resolution. Does not bind the town to take any particular action. So if you're in favor of this resolution, press one for yes, two for no, three to abstain. Let's leave voting open for a few more seconds, since that might have been a lot to take in. Okay. Let's go ahead and close voting now. And the resolution passes, 191 in the affirmative, nine in the negative, eight abstentions. That takes us now to Article 77, which is another resolution, this one by Guillermo Hamlin. Mr. Hamlin, do you want to present?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting, Guillermo Hamlin, Precinct 14. Since we're nearing the end, we're going to keep this as low-tech as possible. This is Article 77. This is a resolution to eliminate mandatory brokers' fees for tenants. So the reason why this came to my attention was there was a slew of consumer protection efforts that actually came by way of one Arlington resident. We may know her. Her name is Governor Mara Healy. She made a comment mentioning that she believes that this is an initiative worth doing, and that it is the purview of landlords to basically retain their own brokers. And this is a position that I share, and it's not just myself. Cities such as Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, the areas by which there is the most egregious of these practices, where they compel tenants to pay their own retained brokers, have submitted home rule petitions to actively address this issue. So why are we not doing something similar? Well, I believe that in this case, because we need to see what comes next, I would think it'd be more appropriate at this time to have Town Meeting chime in, not only to share our voice in supporting Boston, Cambridge, and Somerville, but in addition, our own state senator, who is a co-sponsor in the State House, to do this very act, to eliminate mandatory brokers' fees for tenants being compelled by their landlord to cover their brokers' fees. I'm just going to keep it at that. Let's keep this swift. Unless there's any opposition, I ask that you please proceed to vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Before you go anywhere, Mr. Hamlin, because this is not coming from a committee report...
That's right.
You'll need to make the motion.
That's fine.
You don't have to read the whole thing.
No, that's fine. So I'm going to, to make sure I'm doing this accurately, I would like to make the motion as revised, because we've had to revise it. So please, let's proceed on, I proceed to make a main motion as revised. Thank you.
In the annotated warrant, thank you. And do we have a second? We have a second. So that main motion is now before us. Citizens petitions just work a little bit differently than when the recommended vote is coming from a committee or board. Thank you. Thank you. And you don't have any guest speakers? Governor Healy is not here with us. She's always welcome.
No, she's quite booked up.
Okay. Okay, so we'll proceed now to a vote on the main motion of Article 77, as offered by Mr. Hamlin. So, and this, of course, is a majority vote, as resolutions always are. Voting is now open. If you're in favor of that resolution, there's no opposition speaker who requested to speak in advance. So if you're in favor of the resolution, press one for yes. If you're opposed to the resolution, press two for no. Again, this is expressing the opinion of Town Meeting in a non-binding way. Does not bind the town to take any action. Get your votes in, five seconds. Okay, let's close voting. And the resolution passes, 169 in the affirmative, 16 in the negative, 17 abstentions. That takes us now to Article 78. Also, a citizens petition from Guillermo Hamlin. Mr. Hamlin, you have the floor.
Guillermo Hamlin, Precinct 14. It's been so long, guys. Hey, what's up? So I am submitting this additional revised main motion, whereby we're looking to have it be resolved by which to have the town acknowledge recent state action, where a recent Supreme Court ruling of Tyler versus Hennepin County, where the US Supreme Court ruled that government, the governments, municipalities in particular, may not retain surplus equity from tax foreclosures beyond the amount owed, and this has established an unconstitutional taking under the Fifth Amendment. Now, I'm not a lawyer, but the Supreme Court made it very clear that this can no longer be a practice that is tolerated. Unfortunately, this is something that has been done, to some extent, in the state of Massachusetts, where third parties, particularly those involving in private equity, would work in conjunction with municipalities to effectively take your house, take your equity, and do so with amounts as short as $11. So if you are even so much as to be quite late for a variety of life circumstances, this could be done. Now, luckily, these protections have been ruled by the Supreme Court, and recent state action, Mass. General Law's Chapter 60, Section 64A, has recently been passed, so this has been codified. Yay, that's a good thing. However, this resolution asks that the town actually modifies recent language to update it, to make sure that our residents are protected, once that they can actually finalize some of the language that's taking place December 31st of this year. So I ask that you please vote on this main motion as revised, so that we can protect our residents and go home. Thank you.
And Mr. Hamlin, can you move your main motion?
My apologies, I thought I did. I moved to, I moved to make the motion as revised.
Right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. The revised main motion is now before us. Yeah, Mr. Wagner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, Precinct 15. I'm not going to say any personal opinion. I'd just point out that I believe, Mr. Moderator, it is incorrect that the comment to the revised motion says that the resolution would protect homeowners. I don't believe there's any legal action here, right?
Wait, wait, wait. We kind of point of order with, okay, we had a point of order. So just so I understand, Mr. Wagner, is it a question about scope? Scope of resolution? Right, so what was the verb that you're contesting?
Mr. Moderator, I'd just remind you that resolutions don't have any legal force.
That's correct.
Am I correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
But was there some language in here that you objected to being in a resolution?
I just would point out to the body that I wish it did have protections for homeowners, but I don't believe the resolution has any protections yet, because it's a resolution.
Whoa, 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 okay, okay. That's really engaging in debate and commentary, which is not appropriate here. If it's a question about scope, about what language, and I did have a conversation with Mr. Hamlin about the particular verbs that were used that could give the impression of action that the town or Town Meeting was taking, which would not be accurate, and that was the cause of those revisions, and that's all that needs to be said about scope there. Mr. Slickman, did you have any point of order in addition to that? Okay, thank you. Okay. And so, Mr. Hamlin, were you all set?
That's correct. I already moved the motion as revised.
Okay, and we got a second. It is now in front of us, the revised main motion. Okay. So let's now proceed to a vote on the main motion under Article 78. This is a majority vote. If you're in favor of the resolution under Article 78, press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no, three to abstain. This is a non-binding resolution, so it does not bind the town to take any particular Okay, just a few seconds left before we close voting. And let's go ahead and close voting. Okay, and the resolution passes, 174 in the affirmative, nine in the negative, 18 abstentions. That takes us now to Article 79. I'd like to invite up Jim Ballen from Zero Waste Arlington.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Ballen, Precinct 6, and co-chair of Zero Waste Arlington. Article 79 is a resolution sponsored by the Zero Waste Arlington Committee, which is a town committee. Zero Waste Arlington voted 7 to 0 for favorable action on this resolution, which asks the town, which asks for the development of a zero-waste plan for the town of Arlington. So I just want to spend a couple minutes explaining why we are proposing this resolution. Next slide, please. There are many reasons, many reasons why we think this resolution should be supported, and why we think there are some reasons for reducing waste. These include rising costs for disposal, protecting health and the environment, and waste disposal limits, which I'll talk about next. Next slide, please. So Mass. DEP has a solid waste master plan. The Mass. DEP's 2030 Solid Waste Master Plan states that by 2030, Massachusetts cities and towns should reduce waste disposal by 30%. This is based on 2018 levels. And by 2050, we should reduce that waste by 90%. Next slide, please. So these graphs show how Arlington has two issues with regard to waste, controlling costs and meeting our goals. So on the left side is the rising disposal costs for waste in Arlington, and you can see it's pretty much been a steady increase over the last several years, and that is projected to continue. And on the right-hand graph, you'll see that we actually have been doing a reasonably good job in bringing that waste tonnage, the amount that we actually dispose of, down. It's going in the downward direction, which is, which is great. However, we still have the ways to go to meet the Mass. DEP's 2030 Solid Waste Master Plan target. As you can see on the very right side, the blue line is where we're at, and the red line is the target, so we have a little ways to go before 2030 to reach our goals. Next slide, please. So where does Arlington's waste go? I think many of you probably know that our waste goes to incinerator, the Wheel Obrator Incinerator in North Andover. What you may not have thought about too much is that when you're done burning things, you end up with ash, and that ash is fairly toxic. It goes to the Wheel Obrator, a special facility, a wheel obrator ash landfill in Shrewsbury, Mass. It's important to know that facility is actually closing, or scheduled to close, in 2028, which will only likely increase the cost of disposing of our waste. The incinerator and landfill sites are located next to environmental justice communities, which means Arlington is imposing the environmental harms of our waste on these already overburdened communities. Next slide, please. This chart shows that our trash includes materials that could be diverted elsewhere. This is a waste characterization study done in 2022 for all of the cities and towns that contribute to the Wheel Obrator North Andover facility, not just Arlington. But what shows in the blue and red, blue and green are waste, over 50% of the waste sent to the North Andover Trash Incinerator in 2022 contain materials that could have been recycled or composted. Those are in the recycling in blue. The compostable in green is nearly 40%. So it shows that there is potential here for us to significantly reduce our waste. Next slide, please. So why reduce waste? There are many reasons. I'll just go quickly over some of them here. To mitigate, to mitigate rising financial costs of incineration in ash landfill, help achieve the DEP's solid waste master plan goals, as I mentioned, reduce the inefficient incineration of food scraps, which really do not burn very well, lower our environmental impacts, including reducing greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to climate change, reduce the health impacts from incineration, enhance recycling for reuse of materials, and again, minimize disproportionate impact on environmental justice communities. Next slide, please. So the zero-waste plan creates some opportunities for Arlington. The zero, a zero-waste plan will help the town to do many things. I'll list just a few of them here. It will help it to identify opportunities to conserve resources through responsible consumption and waste prevention, to determine best strategies to reduce waste by increasing rates of composting and recycling, to promote reuse... and recycling, to promote reuse, and identify opportunities to reduce single-use products. And perhaps most importantly, I think it would help the town to structure future waste contracts to best support Arlington's needs. Next slide, please. So lastly, what does it mean to establish a zero waste plan? What are the next steps? Zero Waste Arlington, in collaboration with the town, will seek funding to engage an experienced consultant to help the town gather the necessary data and identify multiple opportunities to reduce waste in town. And so some of the activities that we would be asking this consultant to do include obtaining input from multiple stakeholders within the community, gathering comprehensive waste data, assessing upstream, midstream, and downstream opportunities to reduce waste, establish goals to meet or exceed the solid waste master plan goals, identify both short and long-term actions the town can take to achieve its waste reduction goals, provide a cost-benefit analysis for each of those proposed actions, and in the end, provide a comprehensive report to guide town policies going forward. And last slide is to request your support for this resolution. These are the ways you can reach out to us if you have any questions or you would like to support our efforts. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Once again, I did not receive any requests in advance for any opposition speakers for this resolution. And so you can find the full text in line in the annotated warrants. You can also find it in the Zero Waste Arlington supplemental report, which has the vote language in there. And so now we'll proceed to a vote on the main motion under Article 7. Since this came from an official town committee, it is automatically before us because we received that report previously. So voting is now open for the main motion under Article 79. If you're in favor of the resolution, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. Okay, five seconds to get your votes in. Okay, let's close voting. And the resolution passes 183 in the affirmative, 19 in negative 9 abstentions. Okay. So I guess through Article 79, we're not quite done yet. So now I want to ask, the only article that we have left on the table is Article 3. And I'll ask that, are there any motions to reconsider from folks who have given notice of reconsideration? Seeing none. Ms. Deschler?
Christine Deschler, Chair of the Finance Committee. I move that Article 3 be taken from the table.
Okay, we have a motion to take Article 3 from the table. And a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. Article 3 is now before us. And, let's see. Okay. And there's no more business under Article 3, so it is automatically disposed. And before we take a motion that Ms. Deschler will give us to dissolve this meeting, I do want to just say one last thing, and it'll be very brief. When you walk out of here tonight, usually I prepare my remarks, but I just want to speak directly to you. When you walk out of here tonight, I want you to think about someone that you've possibly disagreed with deeply here in this chamber. And you might have very kind of raw or negative feelings. There was a lot that went on in Article 40 that we already talked about. And I want you to think about having that person in mind, and think about your feelings toward them, and try to imagine what they might be going through in their lives. Everyone's got stuff. Everyone's got their stuff that makes things harder for them. And to just try to summon some grace, because I think if we can do that as a community, like, we often think of political polarization in terms of like Republicans and Democrats and what's going on at a national scale. If we zoom down to our level where things feel much more tangible, much more human, like, this is where the work is, right? And we have, I think we've seen that we have a lot of work to do in this town. And we need to see each other as human beings. We need to see them with dignity. We need to have some grace. We can disagree with them deeply and like with really sharp, incisive arguments. Like, that's what this body is for. It's a crucible for that kind of intellectual combat, right? But we need to remember that, like, we're all in this together, even when it seems like we're deeply divided. And for all those folks who want to solve problems at the national or global level, let's try to start, at least think about how that manifests down at our local level. Because I'm confident that if we can do that here, and other people could do that in their communities, I think that'll go a long way to resolving all the sorts of terrible, awful issues that we see going on in the world right now. So please, just give that some thought on your way out. Okay. Ms. Deschler?
Christine Deschler, Chair of the Finance Committee. It is moved that the 2025 Annual Town Meeting be dissolved.
Okay, we have a second. We have a motion to dissolve the 2025 Annual Town Meeting. A second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes!
Remember to return your clickers on the way out. All those opposed say no. Thank you for that. It is a majority vote. The meeting is dissolved. Thank you.